Thank you.
Shall we pray? Our dear heavenly Father, and our Father threw the bloodshed on the cruel cross of Calvary. Master, once more at this point in time, when indeed we come before your face, in the name of education of our own children, we pray, heavenly Father, that as we commence with this public participation, public hearings, you illuminate each and everyone's thoughts, that whatever will be brought forth, it will be to the upbuilding of our own nation. Heavenly Father, we pray, and we want to thank you for the opportunity once more granted. We call upon your presence to come and lead us from the beginning to the end. We pray for the chair, we pray for everyone who is going to rise up to contribute, we pray for the whole program. All this for your name's sake I pray, and by faith I declare everything possible and done. Amen.
Thank you, Morotwaro Nasvonga. Thank you very much. Now, we are going to give the acting mayor, Raghanya, to do an opening on our behalf.
Good afternoon, DuMelaan. Aften. LeMacheroni. LeMatsiari. Amavut. Kina sofi Raghanya. Kukwara kudumadi sagir good morning. Kudumadi jaba twafo. Kere DuMelaan, kibaba angi aften, kibaba angi. Cheka mka kibaba angi. Dan kido shumisale, lemelele tonguichicha, okamoka. Gar kimo, kina sofi Raghanya kere. Kigagrecha zani municipality, kigare executive committee, kiti lela gatun la mayor, ra onelele fuga gay. Biala, wilar kidekumwe, mbele, mokitulodia, and welcome.
My name is Raghanya.
Kino kubala ruti elejaner, skara, sar tompaner, tompa baba golu, baba nyana, bato mpa baba golu, baba golu bato mpa baba nyana.
I'm here to welcome you, and I hope that we are going to respect each other by listening to one another. Thank you.
Yabegole, lisamtin, wemisale zorodan, vamo penta, den avolabola question. Skaba kisan, akere volabola.
Anybody who wants to say something, kindly raise your hand, and we'll acknowledge you, and you can contribute.
Alright, that's why ki, kira tella, kubolabola kapulele, yakavrina.
That is why I prefer to speak in my language.
Ki votede, kibatu baba, kubolabola, onelele Melaan. Ale kidekume mobile, kabona is because.
I was actually voted into this position by the very same people that I'm talking, their language.
Namokiyemi, gar kire umilwe.
I am here in front of you because I have been sent to talk to you.
Kiyeme dogole amorena, ore kikweni liduichira, bote kamo, holo niyali nyenyé. Lidele ti eleje, jeba dauko robojacha jona.
I'm here actually to welcome you in this nyenyahol, to come and talk about what we're here for.
Ketsabago reba twa bantso, rea guana, ridian thoka iti, ra ra gurubaana, baba rena. Bakwelepele, kadi tuja jabo, na kutsanale, renakamkori lo, ra zanadi kolo, ra rutaka, kakona.
I am glad that we, as Black people, really communicate and be one united people, and we are here to make sure that the future of our kids is in good hands.
Akere kuwa, muragole, azibago, ribero Thomas Kolo, ri baba kaya kan. Ganabi ala, rutsandere beli di changes, jagore. Kuwa arakuwa, aksanale, morbe, ogona ganabi ala.
In the olden days, you know where we come from, when we started school, but things have changed, and now we are here looking for the change.
Ketsabago rumuzari, omogole, omoga, ibalo ngwana, atoma ere, two weeks, umu isakreche, odoga kreche, oya preschoolu, oya distepa, kamo, kaba sante bazama, edistepa, kamo ka. Ha jona, no tuwa ya schoolu, niki nele eight years, ukuma na kifeja twenty something years, regio ya high school.
Every parent is looking forward for the child from birth to creche, from creche to primary school, from primary school, then into high school, until I finish my schooling.
Sesu golu, gurutompe, ma teacher, yari narutompe, bazwadi libana, bato mpa ma teacher, ma teacher, bato mpa bazwadi, bana barana, bato mpa bazwadi, amogole, ba teacher, baba, baba rutaw.
The main aim is for the parents to respect their children. The children must respect their parents. Teachers must respect their children. Children must respect parents. Everybody should respect.
Gar kare tumilele, iti, kibekisanya, goli dialanago. Sa aga gauri, amorele, gile, mole nyenyé di toilette, di kuwa. Odubwa, omusadi, olakamunizoro, lakala left. Omogole, omoga, gora, ta, ifitile, odoo zena, kagona. Ar kikweni, riduichira, bote, reti eleje, di presentation, jeba dor fago jona. Refelelele, je, rutole, misama, zoro. Omogole, omoga, egwa, kaliba, dili. Aba azibago, rekamo onu, seba mudijio, osana, osukushisi, se, osukile, wilo, bere, kaga, sona. Mila webe, okamuka, rabambiri. Aebel, narri, sapocha. Olenna, ki, misale, zoro, ore, kia, isapocha, rukwele, pini, kamuna, weyoba, na.
We are all in this hall for one main purpose, to come and listen. The abolition block is just outside for those that nature may call, and we all come back into this hall, discuss what the future holds for our children. And when we engage, you'll be acknowledged by raising up your hand, and we continue with our contribution.
Kakitilo, feleleja.
In conclusion.
Renabatu babanzo, akere bele, kulele, busua, narutompe, malemiyari na, rea ratre, kai, kaba, kaimo, rea ogona. Skaki, tumaka, malemiyaba, twa baba angwe.
We as. We as Black people, we are always united, and we are proud to speak in our own language. And I believe that in order to understand what we are doing here, we should speak in our own language.
Sama, fellow, kire, artu telejenu, bana barana, oru, baruja, gaba, taba, nchebusu, annebe, renabatzoni, baba, narbe, ogar, gabi, onaki, alebo.
Let's inspire and encourage our children so that their future should look bright.
Thank you very much, councillor Raghanya.
Raghanya, councillor, kia, kulebo.
Thank you very much. Now, we are going to ask the members of parliament to introduce themselves.
Retlo, pele maluka, parliamente, ore, aditzi vichu, ore, kibona, bo man.
Good afternoon.
Kialdamisha.
Libitso laka, kina, Tebo Holitieye.
I am Tebo Holitieye.
I am a member of the National Assembly of the Sixth Parliament.
Kinali, logola, parliamente, yavo, selela.
I come from Gauteng, or I serve in the Portfolio Committee of Basic Education.
Kile, logola, portfolio committee in parliament.
I am originally from Gauteng.
Kijwakeli Gauteng.
And I'm deployed to the National Assembly by the African National Congress.
Ki rumile, kiva, National Congress in a National Assembly.
Tawela.
Good afternoon.
Linalaka, kina, katewawa, Susan Pala.
I am Katleho Susan Pala.
Kina, member of the provincial legislature.
I'm the member of the
provincial legislature. Kenu, Limpopo. Ki rumile, kii Democratic Alliance.
I'm representing Democratic Alliance.
DuMelaan.
Good afternoon.
Linalaka, kiba Fuze yabo.
I am Bafuzi yabo.
Kile, logola, portfolio committee.
I'm the member of Portfolio Committee of Basic Education.
A member of the National Assembly in the Sixth Parliament.
Kinali, logola, National Parliamente, mo, eh, parliamente, yavo, selela.
I'm from Gauteng. And deployed by the African National Congress.
Ki rumile, kii, mkhathwa, ANC.
DuMelaan.
Good afternoon.
Linalaka, kire, ndelelo, mashavela.
I'm ndelelo, mashavela.
I'm from Limpopo.
Kijwakeli, moli, Limpopo.
Just in Majadistlu.
Kamomajadistlu.
Deployed by the Economic Freedom Fighters in Parliament.
Ki rumile, kii EFF.
I'm a member of the Portfolio Committee of Basic Education.
Kile, logola, eh, Portfolio Committee of Basic Education.
Forward to free quality education forward.
Pele, ya, pele, ka, eh, tutoyo, ya, mapali.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nombuiselot, Ladies Adions. I am. I am a member of this Portfolio Committee on Basic Education.
Kile, logola, eh, committee, ya, tuto, ya, montevo.
From National Assembly, thank you.
Ojwaga, National Assembly.
DuMelaan.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ronnie.
Kina Ronnie.
My father's name is Moratze.
Linala, mkhala, yuwa, mpele, gao, kina, tse, shaw. Moratze, shaw.
Good. Deployed in 2019 by the African National Congress to the Sixth Administration.
Ka, wa, wa, nineteen, twenty, ki, ka, ki rumile, mo, kiyemekeli, logola, African National Congress.
Okay, in the Sixth Parliament.
Mo, parliamente, yavo, selena.
Thank you very much. Further deployed into this all-important Portfolio Committee on Basic Education.
Ka, wusha, ka, rumela, rapegelil, logolele, emejiro, Portfolio Committee, mo, koronya, tuto, ya, montevo.
Hailing down from Limpopo Province.
Ki, joho, namo, Limpopo Province.
In this district.
Wonamo districting, asaka, okwa, baba, roli, districti, aman.
In this district, ya, mopan.
Oh, more districting, ya, mopan.
Thank you very much.
Aften.
DuMelaan.
Vitaramina, Elvis Soue.
Good day, my name is Elvis Soue.
De oma, impumalanga, Bushbuckridge.
I'm from Pumalanga in Bushbuckridge.
Deployed by the ANC.
Ni rumeruwe, Ivandara ANC.
In the National Assembly.
Eka, parliamente, ya, tikoyen kwaro.
And in this portfolio of basic education.
Naleka, committee, lebe, kaka, tisho, kaka, makata, Johnso, yalehansi.
Engo.
Thank you.
Enchikan.
Good day.
Vitaramina, Violet Mathe.
My name is Violet Mathe.
Ni deploy African National Congress.
Ni rumele, Ivandara ANC, been deployed by the ANC.
Alimpopo Legislature.
Eka, woyaku, ndamilawa, yale Limpopo.
As the Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Education.
Ta ni, himutsamwaxtuluwa, committee, lebe, kaka, tisho, kaka, Johnse Elehans.
Tawela.
Good day.
Linalaka, kina, Chair, Boni David Selan.
Vitaramina, emina, Chair, Bud David Selan.
Ki, jamotigilane.
Ne, oma, latigilane.
Ki rumile, GNC.
Ni rumile, Ivandara ANC.
Kesa, waga, Mara Portfolio Committee.
Ka, committee, le, ya, Johnso.
Chuiyamidah, my name is Desiree Van der Vaat.
Good day, vitaramina, emina, Desiree Van der Vaat.
I am your hometown girl, I live in Zanin.
Ne, oma, kuala, Zanin, nitombiya, kuala, kaya.
And I was elected by the people of Limpopo on the National Assembly list.
Sawruile, Ivan, balala, Limpopo, kuya, eka, parliamente, ya, tikoyen kwaro.
And my party found me fit enough to serve on education.
Ivandara mina, ribone, ni ringanerile, kutira, eh, Hansi, kaka, committee, ya, Johnso.
No, thank you very much, you can see they are all deployed.
Councillor Shnene, mashbuana, inkuwa, balo, rumeriwa.
And very proudly, so.
Ikote, nyungo, bzisa, Shnene.
Yeah, it's Saturday afternoon, so let us quickly get to the business of the day.
In zengawa, mkebela, ai, kongo, mene, kama, kaya, siku.
The reason why all of you are here.
Shkongo melo, shakuba, inkuwe, nihirila.
I want to acknowledge the Department of Basic Education.
Nela, bakutakela, ntsukwene, nza, uli, Johnse Elehans.
We've got the officials from DBE National.
Yenava, officer, rixu, kai, kandza, uli, Johnse Elehans, ya, tikoyen kwaro.
Can we just ask you to just sigh?
Nengamkomba, leshak, committee, bonakarisa?
And the provincial officials.
Nava, officeri, balash, funzedu, inkulu.
From the Department of Education.
Kusuka, kandza, uli, elehansi, ya, Johnso.
We ask you to just rise and.
Nangwena, ngakomba, leshak, mi, imelenge.
From the district, mopan.
Kusuka, kashfunza, nzo, ngo, sha, mopani.
I ask you to just rise.
Nengamba, leshak, nangwena, mi, imelenge.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Shnene.
And then the parliamentarians.
Shiro.
Ach, diani, promoter, noch. Ah, omatot. Some years, I learned, next year. I bam, blessings. The staff, just to quickly stand up so that.
Batiriksu, kai, parliamente, na, bonabanga, imelenge, yavabona.
No, thank you very much.
Councillor Shnene.
My name is Bongiwe, mpingo, kika, but think I did not really say who am I.
Vitaramina, emina, Bongiwe, anubulange, kusungule, leshak, emina, Mani.
We are dealing with Bella Bill.
Ilanku, sani, nana, ombisi, lo, wa, Bella.
Bella Bill, which is Bill of the Department of Basic Education.
Ina ombisi, wa, nza, ulo, ya, Johnso, yalehansi.
Bella Bill, which is sent to Parliament, to the speaker last year.
Ina ombisi, lo, auru, meruwe, parliamente, eka, shpikara, lembele, ruunzeke.
Because the Department of Basic Education is intending to make amendments.
Ikovanza, uli, Johnso, ilava, kuchincha, kokari.
Now, for them to make those amendments, they need to go through Parliament.
Kovaba, endla, kuchincha, lokfaneleke, kufano, kuhunza, eh, parliamente.
Now, after the speaker have received the request from the department, she has then sent that to the committee.
Nza, kala, koshpika, rashukume, shkombelo, kusuka, Parliament, shishu, rumeleka, committee.
And then, as the committee, we have started the process by inviting written submissions, that was last year. I think many of you were aware and they submitted.
Ta ni, ukomite, sunglen tiro, ukuramba, mabonela, ngatzariuwa, lembele, ruunzeke, buta, labangu, inase, miyikile, mabonelo.
And then, after that, we have done the oral submission as the committee.
Nza, kasha, so, i, enla, shminsamo, le, yaku, ingisela, mabonelo.
Now, we are at the third stage where we are doing the public hearings, and we have started yesterday. We are starting in this province of Limpopo.
Elekashi, gesha, unaru, la, i, ingisela, kama, mabonelo, isungurile, la, i, sungule, ketolo, ingala, ashfunzene, inkulusha, Limpopo.
The Bella Bill is, as a result of the South African Student Act of 1996.
Ina ombisi, usuka, eka, na, u, watikuwa, makata, Johnso, 1996.
The department is intending to strengthen the governance in schools.
Nza, ulo, ilava, kuanji, sama, fumelo, eskoluini.
The department is intending to provide systems in our schools.
Nza, ulo, i, ringeta, kuba, iti, sama, ti, relo, yukar, kuma, mindelo, eskoluini.
There are many clauses which I know you are aware of, that's why you are here. Whether you agree or you disagree, that the department is proposing that we need to change.
Kunaspe, muso, ambana, ambana, sanau, lisis, ngakoa, na, mistivaka, isona, sinakula, shakumi, bambe, rela, ambimi, kana, etanasona, kobe, kufumela, nasona, lisin, nza, uli, ilava, kuschincha.
So I'm not going really to go clause into all those clauses.
Anike, fami, ispe, musu, inkuasu.
I just want to alert people that as we are going to allow you, the public now, because this is actually your session, to speak. House rules us that each speaker is going to have three minutes to speak.
Nava, kukombisa, leshak, kulu, etam, fumelela, kuba, mi, balabula, miyika, mabonelo.
After.
Nalu, inga, tau, teri, sa, shublaburu, shunguana, shunguana, staba, na, timinete, tinaru, kubolabula.
After the two minutes, we are stopping you.
Nza, kati, minete, teto, hami, imisa.
And then, after that.
Nza, kasha.
For those people who don't feel comfortable to speak in front of many people, we've got a form like this, which you can access there at the back, from our officials, and some here in front, they do have this form. This form, you need to state clearly that you must circle, or whether you support or you don't support, or you partially support. Because many people yesterday, they did not really, they were not clear whether they support or not support. And then, then, from here till this side, you state your reasoning, or what you support, or what you don't support. And then you take it back to where you got it, so that it is recorded.
Ina, formo, ufanele, bangai, koma, mtsamwaxtulu, le, ingana, ba, officeri, la, bangale, nza, ku, na, la, machweni, eka, lava, batwa, bangatusheka, ngikubolabula, machweni, kavano, mengateka, formo, li, ami, tata, miyika, maboneli, ya, ngwina, shosungula, kuba, kukombisa, leshak, ma, seketela, kobe, kukane, tananabu, mbia, ebimishasha, meta, shubangelo, shangwina, nza, kasha, shu, mengateka, formo, li, ami, keta, eka, ba, officeri.
Yes, so if you are going to stand on the chair and speak, please don't fill in the form.
Lokuruku, mi, tami, imela, machweni, mi, balabula, asbo, leshak, mi, tata, formo.
And if you are going to fill the form, please don't go to the chair.
Lokuruku, mi, tata, formo, mengati, la, machweni, ngataba, kurnala, i, nukubolaburuwa, kakona.
Can I now allow or no chance that wants to make her contribution?
Nengateka, lansukwene, maboko, ya, lava, balabaku, niyika, mabonelo.
I'll start this side, yes you.
Sungulaita, leria.
One, two, three, four, five. There is a hand there, the back, with a yellow.
Kono, kolen, zaku.
Yes, six, seven, seven, yes, a sato, tichet. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, right at the back.
Eleven, linzaku.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Shnene.
Tawela, tawela, tawela. Good afternoon.
Can we listen, can we just listen to him?
Ega, ba, ingisela.
Good afternoon, to this August House, standing in front of you this afternoon, on this very auspicious occasion, I am Matatso Lebiass Ramalepe, a councillor at Mobani District Municipality, under the Democratic Alliance. I'm also a resident of Mobani District. I reside in Zanin, and I am here today as a consent resident. Someone that deals with schools, high schools, mediskent, benforsta, and I'm here to register my objection to this Basic Education Laws Amendment Bill. Now, I'm going to start from the premise of the language and admissions policies. I individually, as a councillor or as an individual, I reject this amendment bill. I want it to be noted and recorded that I reject this bill and I move from the language and administration and admissions policies. Now, what I understand about this Bella Bill is that it plans to remove the powers of school governing bodies to make decisions about language and admissions policies for their schools. What this bill aims to achieve is that it will be used to target mother tongue education, especially Africans, Cypedes, and English in schools. The constitution provides the right to mother tongue education where this is reasonably practicable. Now, we as concerned residents strongly defend and seek to extend the right where parents wish to exercise it. Parents need, or parents deserve the right to exercise their powers within SGBs in schools. Now, the department, okay, schools and communities must keep their power to decide what's best for their children. Butzwadi and this school governing body, they must reserve that right. Yorba, konozwar, na, how do they determine their, 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 the rules and regulations in their schools? Now, the department should only intervene if there's evidence that a school is using a language policy to discriminate against learners. The other part is that this bill will give the department an opportunity to abuse those powers and it will discriminate against learners and to undermine the right to mother tongue education. That's where I move from. Now, now, while I support proper admission, appeal mechanisms, we reject the notion that SGBs are forced to appeal to heads of education departments against unfair, damaging policies imposed upon schools by those same heads of that department. Rayanata, bayor, bilie, itlo, itlo, empowera, the HOD, the second manager, le, 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 lebatwa, department, yes?
Your time is up.
Is it up?
Yes.
Okay, but last but not least, I register my objection, thank you.
Emina, Matatso Ramalepe, de oma, eka, bandara DA, kona, kuala, kashtrikilishwan. Maponela, emina, ilesakua, hikane, ta, na, ombisi, lo, wang, I love, leshak, kupasisiwa. Shosungula, iku, utanlo, ana, makaku, teri, swakar, rimera, mana, ana, lava, kungatawa, kuro, matimba, la, banganda, bana, barana, bata, arungo, pungo, puka, timito, fana, na, shpoonu. Xavunbir, iku, ruurungeta, kuteka, matimba, ya, bata, aru, la, bangasiro, sa, ti, hubo, takufanbi, sa, school, kobe, the SGB. Xavunaru, a, eshlabi, leshaku, ba, ba, aliruwa, kuba, ba, enla, milau, le, ifanbi, sakas, kolo, shalumba, tsamaka, kakona. Xavunune, iku, a, eshlabi, leshaku, kuyikua, matimba, eka, mu, fanbi, sinkulu, wang, da, uli, ya, Johndo, eka, shfunza, nzo, ngosha, shu, kobe, district manager, leshaku, kuba, ye, na, ala, mulaka, ma, fanbi, seli, ufana, na, the SGB. Na, kona, the SGB, atifane, langa, kuba, ti, sindisua, leshaku, ti, endla, shkombelo, shakulula, misua, kama, fanbi, seli, ya, mila, ndukobe, the appeal. Ikuba, the SGB, ti, oma, eka, tindawo, le, diskolo, singa, kona, ikoko, la, hor, shiro, sa, the SGB, wona, ba, tiba, kusupiko, sa, scholar, liswa, tere, la, kaka, so.
Can we, can we agree to our interpreters that you will do like yesterday? Interpret when it's evenek, ne? When it's English, as he kuben. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Sorry, Chairperson, I think that microphone is much audible to people at the back than this one. Can I rather use that one, please? The one that the interpreter is using. Can you please lend me that mic, yes? Am I audible? Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, my beautiful community and my district of Mopani. My name is Batomi Ramalepe. I come from Greater Letawa one-four. I'm a PR councillor of the Democratic Alliance in Greater Letawa. We just want to take this opportunity and thank the leadership for coming down to the community's level. You are, you are really, really serious about service. You are here to make sure that the livelihood of our children is empowered. All the stakeholders, our residents and everybody, really were for respecting this opportunity. As the Democratic Alliance, we just want to register our, our knowledge about this bill. It's not a lot. In our honour, as the DA, we saw that we should ask pertinent questions pertaining to this bill, to this amendment of the bill. First one, it would be, make, please make people understand what is the intention of this bill? What is the intention of the amendment of this bill? Is this bill going to rather focus on to keep teachers in the classroom? Can this bill rather use this opportunity to make sure that the teachers are in the classroom? Except for later, we wanted to explain further that we say this bill has got what you call notable exclusions. One being online and blended learning, two sexual abuse in schools and systematic issues. With my two minutes left, I want to go down on online and blended learning. The Bella Bill does not regulate online and blended learning. Since Covid lockdown, this type of learning has become popular and should have been included. Sexual abuse in school. This Bella Bill, the amendment of it, fails to provide enough protection for learners that they have to attend disciplinary hearings in the case of sexual abuse where learners are often victims of adult sexual abuse. Really for this opportunity, let's keep incognito of what I spoke about just now, now, now. And we, we pray as the communities that please include all suggestions, include all. Thank you so much, Chairperson.
Thank you, Chairperson. Thank you, members of the parliamentary committee. Thank you provincial legislature and national legislature. Greetings, revolutionary greetings from Satu Justice Butelezi branch. As Satu Justice Butelezi branch, we hereby say we are for the bill. The Bella Bill, it's one of the recommendations that we believe it's going to improve the education system in our country. The Bella Bill is indicating that we'll have schooling compulsory from grade R. We shouldn't just pick any other point, let's pick it and say it's going to make schooling formal for learners in grade R unlike now where it's partially or voluntary. It's going to be compulsory and it's gonna improve our system of education as outlined by the president in the State of the Nation address when he said we need to have even pre-grade Rs in our schooling system. And we further recommend that the amendment in clause five, section six, that one of the language, we hereby say we strongly support it. It's going to make education to be inclusive to all people and eradicate the apartheid control system that were used to make away other people who are not there. And we further recommend that in clause thirty-six, the amendment of forty-eight, we hereby request that as the parliament kindly make sure that the MEC in each provincial department, they regulate the fees in private schools and also formal modules schools to allow a black child to get proper education. I thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson and also the rest of the committee. My name is Henik Combrunk from the Federation of School Governing Bodies and I represent the Federation of School Governing Body Schools in Mopani District this afternoon. From Fedsa's side, there's a few amendments we do not support which we do feel will not improve quality education. And then there are a few which we well support and hopefully I can mention a few of them today. The ones we do not support will be clause four D, five C, clause sixteen, clause fourteen and clause thirty-four. In particular concerning the language and admission policy. A wise man once said, it takes a community to raise a child. And we feel the authority to establish policy with regard to admissions and language must vest in the community because after all, it is the community whom are closest to our schools, closest to our learners and also know what is happening at our schools. We do not support an authoritarian system where the state has all the say and the HOD has the authority to approve or disapprove admissions and language policies. The disclosure of financial concerns, that is clause fourteen, which entails that a member of the governing body must disclose on an annual basis all their financial concerns but also their partner and spouse and closest relatives. We feel this clause is an invasion of privacy of the members who are not on the SGB but also will deter people from putting themselves available to serve on SGBs. And then in terms of quarterly financial reports, that's clause thirty-four. We do not support the admission of quarterly financial reports because we do feel the submission of a yearly audited statement will suffice and that the department does not have the capacity to process all of that data. We do support grade R being compulsory, uniform national measures concerning governing body elections. We do support the criminalization of providing false information. And then we've got a few ones we do just recommend. A clear definition on meetings, we recommend the extension of section nine in terms of expulsion of learners where we often don't get feedback from the HOD within fourteen days and that learner must go back to school. And then we feel the amendment of section thirty-seven-one in terms of the administration of finances should vest in the minister and not in the HOD of every province. And then the presidents of legislature where the national act must get presidents above provincial guidelines. And that is our submission. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm a homeschooling mother of four and home education has been such a blessing to our family and we reject clause thirty-seven of the Bella Bill. We have made use of the uncapped education model where we aim to develop our children in an unrestricted environment. We as parents are responsible uncapped education facilitators. We are acting in the best interest of our children. And our children have the right to education where all aspects of their personality are developed to its fullest extent. This won't be possible if the Bella Bill with all its restrictions is passed. We have chosen a more informal and delight directed approach. Our children have acquired a love for learning. If the Bella Bill was succeed with its restrictions, only one curriculum will be enforced, only one philosophy will be enforced on our children, there will be no freedom of choice. I acknowledge each of our children's learning preferences and personalities. We celebrate each child's unique giftedness and we stretch and mentor them accordingly. If the Bella Bill was succeed to enforce caps only, it will affect them negatively because they will be forced to learn in a way that's not compatible with their learning preferences. By combining real life learning as a family, we are equipping our children for a rapidly changing world. We don't see curriculum as a separate thing but a way of life. And we have encouraged our children to start with small businesses from a young age. Our country need a generation of entrepreneurs. If the Bella Bill was succeed to enforce only one curriculum, it will restrict our children's learning opportunities and learning experiences. Assessment of my children happens when I sit with them. I'm involved and I want them to be qualified and not disqualified. I don't need formal assessments to see whether my child has mastered something. Our children will be exposed to unnecessary stress when formal assessments are enforced if the Bella Bill is passed. This will negatively affect their love for learning. Our children have learned to be accountable and take ownership from a young age. Our son who is turning sixteen now is already busy with his NQF level four training in plant and animal production. He has, he has developed enough skills and character through uncapped education to start with his further studies and get his qualification. If the Bella Bill is passed with all its restrictions, our children won't have the opportunity to follow their career path from a young age. Our children's need for true education will not be met if the Bella Bill is passed. Therefore, we reject clause thirty-seven of the Bella Bill. We are passionate about the education of our children and we want to leave a legacy. Thank you.
Good afternoon, parliamentarians. Good afternoon, members of parliament today. My name is Muthatole Mw. Or should I face you? I must face the audience because these are the people that I need to convince to understand my point of view. I am a chief education specialist. In fact, I just want to start by reminding Honorable Desri Vanderveldt that when she grew up at a very young age, it was her parents' priority to take her to grade R. That's number one. Now, 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 we are saying and we believe that it is, it is really fair that every other child needs to have access to grade R education without discrimination. It has been shown, statistics, Amnesty International has, has shown that at least out of hundred learners who go to school, fifty to sixty learners are able to exit metric. Only fourteen of that hundred are able to access university entrance. Where are the rest? They have just fallen by the wayside. Why? Because these learners were not prepared. They were not thoroughly prepared during the earlier stages of their schooling career. Let me put my preamble as follows. Grade R is a preparatory step towards formal education. Grade R is a smooth transition between pre-primary education and primary education. Therefore, in grade R, children's literacy and numeracy skills is enhanced. They develop critical skills and less likely to repeat and drop out of school. They access safe environment, they learn to play and socialize with other children and therefore they are able to communicate their emotions at that particular level. They, they develop problem solving skills in grade R. Therefore, we support the Bella Bill by saying it is indeed very prudent that every school going child, I mean every learner in South Africa needs to access that basic education. Therefore, we support the bill. They need to attend without fail. And any other obstructing idea or any other person who obstructed the learner from going to grade R, indeed we support, must be arrested. And of course, parliamentarian, I think you have just given a lenient sentence of twelve months. But of course, I think because now is six months, but twelve months is just fair because at least if you get arrested, you get sentenced by the time you come back from prison, that child shall have gone to grade one at least in twelve months. Because you are, you are a problem to that particular child. The issue of language, language, we are living in a multicultural society. People must learn to adapt to that. And we are saying that as we support the bill, where schools are located within that particular environment where multilingualism is appreciated, schools are located in a place where all cultural groups are there. Oh, thank you, but of course I support. Thank you very much.
The owner of the black vehicle Mercedes Benz with a registration plate FSY seven-three-six. Can you please find a spot for your car? It's distracting traffic.
My name is, my name is Rita Rony Shai. My name is Rita Rony Shai. Let me start by saying we have got four categories in our area and I support this bill. But there are certain issues that we need to add on, which is SGB. The SGB is being overworked but underpaid because there's a lot of work that is done by SGBs. And the other thing is we.
Can we just listen to him, please? Can we just audience?
I've been in the teaching system, in the education system for eight years. And for all these years, I have taught grade six for more than twenty-five years. Now, with this experience. And in that situation, rarely expect a quality education. It's unthinkable. That cannot be realized in my view. We are, you are teaching, we are teaching a congregation, not a class. Any class that exceeds fifty learners, it's a congregation in my view, it's not a class. Because. Because- Now, okay, School A, it produces a good result. Therefore, it will revise its score. School B, it produces results. It receives enrollment drop. In my view, it produces results. It blames a bunch of- The management does a very good- The department- Now, okay, why is School B overflowing with learners? It receives eighty, so it receives enrollment centrally. But why do you apply the secretary office? The secretary office is not legal. The school- The school makes sure they monitor all the schools. They show more legal. School A is performing better than School B. Okay, that school, performance is dropping. It receives enrollment. It receives the secretary office. The school- Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of parliament, members of the assembly, members of local government. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of AfriForum Tannin, I'm the chairman. I'm also a parent of children in the current schooling system. And from AfriForum's side, I say we believe in for every child to have equal access to education according to the constitution of this country. So we are not opposed to many of the provisions of this act. We are in accordance with it. For example, the access of Grade R children to go to school, we support those provisions. Some of the provisions that we do not support, or rather, let me say, if you look at the constitution of the Department of Education, Free State Province, Walcom High School versus Walcom High School, it says, "A school governing body is akin to legislative authority within the public school setting, being responsible for the formulation of certain policies and regulations in order to guide the daily management of the school and to ensure an appropriate environment for the realization of the right education." In the Constitutional Court founding of the Pumalanga Department of Education versus West School, it noted that the school governing bodies are vital part of the democratic governance envisioned by the Schools Act. The effective power to run schools is indeed placed in the hands of the parents and guardians of learners through the school governing body. So in summary, from AfriForum's side, reasons why we oppose this bill is, according to this bill, the final decision-making powers, which currently rests with the school and governing parties, will be transferred to the provincial head of education. Thus, more power will be centralized in the hands of the state. We oppose such centralization of power. The provincial head of education will have final authority to decide in the school's language and the policy and will have to serve the broader community. This will in fact mean the end of African schools. Communities will lose say over the entry requirements at public schools, which could mean fuller classes and therefore poorer quality education. Provincial head of education will have the authority to merge schools, combining their governing bodies and assets, as well as determine new names and addresses for the merged schools. From AfriForum's side, we oppose these provisions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon. My name is Ibn Furi. I'm a pastor at Shofar Christian Church and I support home education and I want to say no to the Bala Bowl, especially section, clause thirty-seven of section fifty-one. Let me just take this thing out of my pocket. I see this bill as an onslaught on the family and the family unit and it discriminates against the parent. And our country has been discriminated so much against in the past. Why should we go back there? Why should go back to those things that in the older apartheid era where things were forced onto people? Why should we be forcing that onto people once again? The bill takes away from holistic education in the family context. The educator does not always share our religious rights, the freedom of our children to express their religious rights. We do not see always that educators put Christ first. That is what we believe and many other educators and even other beliefs, you know, what they believe is not always supported by the school system. And neither can it be supported by the school system because you've got forty children, forty-odd children, like that gentleman said previously. You know, so many children in a class, how do you give individual attention to one child? How do you bring across something that is important to a child? And we as parents are the greatest influence to our children. It's not supposed to be the educator. The educator is not the final say to our children's upbringing. Parents should be primary educators and have the right to educate their children. Parents should have the right to protect their children and the purity of their children. It's not always the case. You cannot look after forty, fifty children and then you've got three, four, five classes. You cannot look after every child. There's forty-plus learners in a class and individual education is not being supported. We need to seek after God. We cannot be like the apartheid previous government that sought after their own thing. We need to seek God, otherwise we're going to fall in the same place, the same place as we did before, where we start discriminating against people. You have to have the wisdom versus knowledge. Individually, you can impart to a child wisdom. When you're sitting with forty children, they're not necessarily going to receive that. They might receive knowledge, but they're not going to walk up with no wisdom necessarily. Then the reverential fear of the Lord, where is that in our schools? And I'm speaking from a Christian point of view. I'm speaking from my side, being a Christian. Then walking the way, for me, that side-by-side, walking with my child, learning my child, educating my child and being with my child all the way. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. I get that.
Good day, Madam Chairperson and the committee. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Bala Bowl. We as family have concerns about the Bala Bowl, specifically the amendments to section fifty-one of the SASSA which deals with the home education. My main concerns are as follows. The nature and character of home education is different from school education and cannot be properly regulated under the same law as school education. The SASSA provides no principles, guidance, procedures or structures to facilitate decisions on the best interest of the child. We are the goods of family and we have four children. We have been home educating them for the last nine years and it was an act of faith. Children are stamped with the image of their parents and this is only one of the ways we know our children are our responsibility. We believe in Christian and classical education. Scripture tells us that we are a mind, a body and an eternal soul. In a medieval education, tools like grammar, dialectic and rhetoric prepare students for conversations of eternal significance about humanity and divinity and soul, life in this world and life in the world to come. Homeschooling frees you to set the course for your children's education. The world looks different to each of us as we are shaped by time, geography, culture, family and personal preferences. We believe education is best experienced together by learning alongside your children with a common goal, to experience and examine God and life. I would like to propose that the Children's Act already sufficiently regulates home education and no additional regulation is needed in the SASSA or elsewhere. Section eighteen-two-A of the Children's Act read with a definition of care in the same act, gives all children the right to have their education guided, directed and secured by their family or parents. So all the necessary principles, guidance, procedures and structures to regulate parental care are also provided in this act, so no additional regulation is therefore needed. I want to conclude. In light of the above points, I would like to ask the following, that proposed section fifty-one in the Bala Bowl be deleted, that the current section fifty-one in the SASSA be replaced with a section which includes the following, a simple notification process which allows the HOD to keep track of children who are receiving education elsewhere than in school without providing regulating powers to the HOD.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dedrick and I'm all the way there from Taba Zimbi. I was a principal here in Abolobedi South. And my main concern with the Bala Bowl at this stage is the lack of research, as pointed out by Mr. Sukis in parliament when questioning the Minister of Basic Education. I think if you had a doctor that told you how they're going to operate on your child, but they've never examined your child, looked at the doctor's reports or scans, will you let that doctor operate on your child? And I feel therefore homeschool communities are afraid of what's going to happen when a Bala Bowl is enacted without the proper research showing that it is to the best interest of the children. Secondly, like I said, I was a principal, a teacher, a coach, worked on universities together with the Department of Social Development. And I've seen children that have a lack of basic understanding of certain academics. I've seen children whose hearts are rebellious. No education system can change that. Only caring teachers can, only loving parents can and only governing bodies, school governing bodies that are concerned about their communities can do that. And they are a beacon of hope. And my concern is that the Bala Bowl will silence their voices the way it is now. So I reject clause thirty-seven of the Bala Bowl and ask for that rejection of that section, of that clause. Then thirdly, I think children need to have a choice, parents need to have a choice to send their children to school at the age they see fit if they homeschool and they want to send them back. I don't see it good for children to be separated from their parents as soon as possible because they need that bond with their parents to help them later in life. Academics can always be learned. And then fourthly, we personally home educate children at our children's home there in Taba Zimbi and we've seen the amazing impact on their lives. And yet, this bill will force us to send them back. If it had happened now, the school that they attend had none classes this year because the department could not finalize transportation for the children from Rorogile or the children from our children's home. They had no class this year yet. Do we put our future of our children in their hands? And then lastly, there's a story about a fierce ship that sailed the ocean. Everyone was afraid of this captain and one evening he actually destroyed a lighthouse warning ships of impending danger like rocks, thinking that, yes, the other ships will fall prey and they will sink. Unfortunately, two years after that, the same ship with the same captain had a stormy night and there was no lighthouse warning them and they crashed into rocks and sank at the precise place where that captain has destroyed that lighthouse. I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you, do not let home education and governing bodies, the lighthouse of our communities be silenced.
Your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can we note times again? One, two, three, four, 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 five, standing, six. But I noted you last time, what's happened? Seven. Then that is up, yes, yourself. This side. Yourself, yes. Two, three, four. If there are no chairs at the back, you can maybe sit at your seat and then as they move, you just move to the, yes, you can proceed that.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Mahnstein. I'm also a resident from Tannin. I don't have a cellphone with me. I'm a resident from Tannin and I'm talking. I'm talking on behalf of, no, it's not working. I'm talking on behalf of the public schools in Tannin. Thank you. This is better. I'm Mahnstein from Tannin. I'm a resident there. I'm talking on behalf of public schools and I want to thank you for the opportunity to submit this comment. Our comments is thus based on the principle of cooperation, governance and partnership. The SGB is not opposed to all proposed amendments, but only those that are stated here. First of all, the SGB fully supports the following principles, no unfair discrimination on the basis of race, gender or any arbitrary ground. School facilities must be utilized and educationally accountable. Section five, subsection five, the HOD has the final authorities, not supported. Therefore, we propose that a current formulation must be retained. And I'm not going to say much more about that because it was already said. I just want to say, the numerical reality of twenty-four thousand public schools, all policies will have to be considered into said uniform principles. If done selectively, it will fall off the principles related to a just administration decision. On school capacity, I also have a problem. We also, hello? We also, hello?
We also have a problem on school capacity. The problem is once we leave for every town, it's not sufficient. Take this, Jay, suitcase over here, it's really big, it's not enough. We must look into it, get to that. The language policy is also a problem. Section six is not supported. The head of the department might improve the language policy of public school and they will stand in, they will stand in the provision of subsection two, the head of the department might allow public school to talk more than one language. Make no mistake, we have English, Hindi, Kannada.
And it's not a problem. We have that with us. But to say you must have more than two or three and the community is not involved there, we are not for that. Then section nine and ten, learner's discipline, we agree with the learner's discipline. We don't have a problem, but we're also asking, can't we look more into the rights of educators? It seems sometimes there is no rights for educators. No, it's impossible because I couldn't speak ma'am. Saying that, it wasn't working. Thank you. No. It didn't work there when I came here. Right, thank you. Section eighteen A, disclosure of all financial interest by SGB members. We think that is wrong and the Pope will handle that. Section twenty, utilization of school facilities, we are against that. Section twenty-one three A, compulsory centralized procurements are not supported by us as well. We feel that you put too much in the hands of too little people and not the community and the community will not be served. Thank you ma'am.
Colleagues, good afternoon. I am Mogamere Jerita from Satu Justice with Elizabeth Branch. Firstly, I want to indicate that as Satu we support the bill. And we believe that education is a societal issue. But therefore, we want to draw the attention of the committee on clause three, section four. As much as we believe that education is a societal issue, it must not be left in the hands of educators and SGB. We believe that the role of parents must be clearly stated. We believe that learners that we teach in schools stays with their parents and guardians. We cannot afford to respond within twenty-four hours. We don't work in a repeat response. Even the police who are dealing with life-threatening issues, they are sometimes unable to respond within twenty-four hours. We therefore believe that parents must report the absences of their learners or their children to the principal, then we can engage from that. We also want the government to acknowledge that educators are not investigators. You said they must investigate, they are not investigators. They have their core business, that is teaching, making sure that the right content is delivered correctly in class. We therefore recommend that you look at that clause. Again, we also believe that in terms of the accountability of SMTs, we need to look it in deep. Because sometimes we attend accountability session, we understand that accountability session is a policy. But the process and the manner in which it's conducted, sometimes we are ridiculed as principals or as SMT members. And sometimes it discourages us, it disturbs us to perform our duties as professionals. We thank you.
I'm a woman, I'm a woman. 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 It's on.
Good day. My name is Nikiwe Kosa. I am part of the WORD committee in the Bapalabwa area. When they travel to these hearings, I always travel with them because I want an opportunity to speak. I request that in schools, we should have CIRA-accredited security personnel who are trained to handle security issues. Our children do drugs in schools and these security that are there at the moment are not well-trained to be able to search them. When they are being taught, they would have done Nyaope during break and they are not able to listen to teachers. You'll find them laughing, they are simply laughing because of the effects of the drugs they took. We also ask that we work together. We ask that, or I ask that you tell the premier, Stenlima Tabata, to tell his Indonesian traditional healers to moderate the noise during examinations. Because when an artist such as Munada is playing in the community, that will disturb those that are studying during that time. Also, the facilities where the pubs, the taverns should respect the closing time so people can have the opportunity to study. I also request that those who come to speak here in the front should also use other vernacular languages because we are not all education exposed, we are not all able to hear them speaking in English.
Thank you very much. My name is Kefas Mabitzela from the ANC and the WORD councillor of Linyeni. I'm here to support the bill, but with addition of what I want to present to the House today. One of the additions is that we must always consult traditional leaders when we merge schools and make them understand why are we merging schools. The second one is that the SGBs must be empowered and given authority to decide on what needs to be done in the schools so that when they take decisions, they should not be taken to call to reverse that decisions. As we know and we understand the behavior that we are finding in the current situation that we are in in our schools. So we are saying, let's give them powers and authority to be decision-makers in assisting teachers and other school stakeholders to be able to be responsible for anything that is happening in the schools. Other things.
Greetings in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ. My name is Susan Patience Kosa. I'm standing here representing the parents, proudly member of Democratic Alliance. I'm not just an ordinary person, I'm the ambassador of Christ. And I believe whatever we're doing here today, it is recorded in heaven. So my concern is more on the system issues. Bala Bill ignores the really issues in our schools. It has no regulation that will solve the followings, dropouts, lack of resources regarding teachers, classrooms, schools, libraries, laboratories, ICT infrastructure and many, many more. Poor quality teachers and teachers that are not qualified to teach their subjects. Therefore, we don't believe as parents that us as community members, we will be represented very well. We believe that Bala Bill will rob communities of their constitutional right to be involved and make decisions pertaining to our children. This must not be allowed. We strongly object Bala Bill. Thank you very much.
Good day. My name is Muna Kehutamu. I'm from Bulaneng Village. I'm here to make my submissions. The bill, we've looked into it and we've perused it, the following are those points that you are against or maybe we think they need some sort of alterations. Section one, on the definition of drugs. We realize that the way illegally it was removed from the initial paper and were saying it should be, we should be having illegal drugs as we heard before. Our learners are still taking substances like crystal meth, they're still taking substances like Nyaope, those drugs are illegal. As far as we are concerned, the illegality or non-legality hasn't been changed in the constitution of the republic. So they should be reverted back to being called illegal substances or drugs. Another one is on liquor. We are having a serious crisis in society whereby alcohol is consumed in large sums in quantity, especially us as black people, who are in majority and who are abusing this substance. So I don't think it's even possible or even imaginable that parliament will come and suggest that we should have schools that sells alcohol. It's something that is uncommon, it shouldn't be done in a Republic of South Africa. You as parliament, you have got duty and obligations to channel this country, but imagine in a bill including insinuation that alcohol should be sold in school premises irrespective of whether there is an event or not, but it shouldn't be sold. And again, we have another suggestion, instead of eighteen, we even think that alcohol should be allowed at twenty-three or twenty-five. So to say alcohol should be sold or insinuated otherwise is a serious disrespect to parents and us who came from this institution and are seeking to make sure that those who are coming after us are having a better time at high school and primary. On clause two, on the penalties regarding disrupting of education. Number one, I'd like to say it shouldn't be like that. Parents are having obligations, this primary caregiver, to make sure that whatever they go to and try to achieve at school or obtain should be what the parents agreed or maybe fully consented. If I were to give an example now and mention Department of Health, they were administering vaccinations, clinical trial vaccination and people, and learners actually, they were forced to say they should be injected or jabbed. And many parents here, I think they might be overview that children shouldn't be vaccinated. And if, okay, let me just jump first.
Chavela, my name is Tawashai. I am an executive member of the ANC Youth League in Watheti One. I, Shaita Wodanial, support the Bala Bill which seeks to enhance the organizational efficiency of the basic education system, to improve school governance, leadership and accountability, transforming education services and protecting vulnerable groups to ensure learner well-being and access to learning. I would also love to add two points if I may, that we need help with monitoring the shops that are operating close to our schools, that these shops, no shop must be selling cigarettes or any form of substances to learners wearing school uniform or carrying bags. That means these shops close to our schools, we need help from the police to monitor them during breaks and in the morning times, that learners are not buying cigarettes or any form of substances in these shops. Please help us. And number two, the same way that we deal with teachers that are using corporal punishment, we also want to have a formal legalized system whereby we deal with learners that are unruly and are disrespectful in the classroom. Thank you.
Most of learners or most of people with disability, they are not educated. Therefore, Iloba very difficult to, Baba employed, most of them, they are not employed. Therefore, still on this one, Geratau Tana Molawo, language policy for admission. for admission. It is good, but sometimes more banemba ba olofadi, especially in our province, I don't know other provinces. Banabarina that denied opportunity to learn kabakala, especially home language. On others, some special schools, more lungu ring Banabaranga that admitted Babo Lela a certain home language. And then Baba Ngwe, Ababi admitted Batravala from here, especially Banabaranga that visually impaired. Baya, me Maspa Lina Otsana lewo, Kapirkon and the like, in order to get education just because mother tongue wana awo farivi within the very same municipality overalula mowana. Nekukopela ruliwa na relebelele, ruchayewi lukish. And then this one here, inclusive education. Banabawa nji disability jedi nji Banabawa na, they can be admitted more di kolo nja rena chelo nguwa city special schools. Disability ya wana, as chelo nguwa ring, they can be barred or baba educated more di kolo nja rena. Ibele itaba tusha ore, stop stigma. Chelo nguwa ba twanaleso na mo ba tumbalungu ring, ba pilaka bo olofadi. Yes, of course, certain disabilities, bakabali special schools, like Banabaranga that visually impaired or Banabaranga disability abo wana, intellectual disability. But where of course they need some special schools. All these things chelo nguwa ba tawali oléwala mo. They won't be possible if teachers are not happy. Teachers must be happy. Teachers are not well-paid. But I expect a worry. But let me tell you, they expect miracles from teachers even though teachers are not well-paid. How can we persuade? Obaradira ba Banabaranga ring, they are good in mathematics, physical science, and accounting nguwa ri, ba dura teaching or ba tava trye, we improve our level of education ka the salary nguwa ring teachers are paid. Ma teacher aba patale, musho wana mo, make them by all means nguwa ri la interview na or ma teacher aba patale nguwa ri. Banabawa drame, three kwa dyandis science and the like. Baba li interest ya wudiya teaching. Banabawa ring goodka de science, ba opta kudiya de engineering, bo doctor, accounting, and so on, those kind of things. Karadi accountant. Rekupela nguwa ri, le falan ma teacher nguwa ri. Education system ya abrenike yo irani very well, kialéwa. Okay. I do support this bill.
Thanks very much. My name is Jack Mawasha. I am the branch executive committee of the ANC in Bonfaya Maponya branch, as well as the regional secretary of Kosa Smopani, now called Sandra Balue Regi. I stand here to support the Billa Bill, which will enhance the organizational efficiency of the basic education, the governance, as well as transforming the education system. I believe that this bill will also ensure that education is accessible as stated in section twenty-nine-one of the Constitution of Republic of South Africa of nineteen ninety-six. We believe that this bill will be able to deal with challenges that we are facing in the school level. Challenges such as school performance as well as learner dropout. Thank you.
Ahoy! Honorable members, the speaker, and everyone who has attended here, I greet you in the name of the Almighty Joe Rastafaray. With me, I'm standing here to support the bill, but do not support section five and section fifty-one. So then here, what I wanted to to let the education department look at it is the issue of teaching religion at school, that it must be brought back so that those children, they can have a discipline. For most of them, they have more time to linger around there after school and they're doing nothing until they involve in so-called drugs. So nyahope and what is that other thing, crystal. And I wanted to indicate the issue of crystal. I've been involved with the CPF myself. I also involved with the spiritual crime prevention and the Men for Change Forum Against Abuse. But we have been trying to gather those boys. But once you catch them with that crystal, even the prosecution there are withdrawing the case because that crystal is not a drug according to them. So you found that there's nothing, no clue that you can do again. Even you see them smoking, what can you do? Because if you arrest them to the state, they release them, they say that is nothing, it's not a drug. So what else will you do? Nothing you're gonna do. So I'm arguing that the children at school must be taught, this is a proposal, must be taught martial art at school. As we do that in Palabura, we have young lions who are participating in karate. And they are always after school, they are coming to karate. So, and another thing is to request from the, to propose from the Department of Education to reinstate the lost Book of Eden, which was brought by Inok from heaven, so that they will know their culture, where they come from. Because this revelation was brought by a black man. And then after, the Romans forbade it that it should not be taught on earth. And that was the way that God or Yah himself instructed Inok while he was in heaven that these books should be passed to each and every child, generation to generation, nation to nations. Blessed.
Good day to the members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Dianet Francois from Patabora. I'm here to represent my homeschool family and homeschool community. We have concerns about the Billa Bill, especially amendments to section fifty-one of the SASSA, which are about home education. Many parents opting for home education due to the following concerns. And these concerns included bullying, drugs, alcohol, sexual sin education, pornography, gangs, gender confusion, teenage pregnancies, abortion referral, interfaith religion, and the removal of the Bible from schools. Parents should be empowered to make decisions for their children's education. How I would describe homeschool is freedom. Freedom to choose what curriculum to use and which paths to take. Freedom to appreciate the simplicity of teaching and how less is really more. Freedom to teach real lesson for the real world. Freedom to explore our own interests and freedom to enjoy every minute God has entrusted me to educate my children. Freedom to love learning. Nelson Mandela quoted, "For to be free is not merely to cast off one's change, but to live in a way that respects and enhances the freedom of others." Nelson Mandela quote, "Real leaders must ready to sacrifice all for the freedom of their people." Nelson Mandela quote, "When a man is denied the right to live the life he believes in, he has no choice but to become an outlaw." Nelson Mandela quote, "Education is the most powerful weapon which can change you to change the world." Nelson Mandela quote. Therefore, we believe in a higher standard education for our children, which is international home curriculums, and this is important to us. And therefore with this, I reject clause thirty-seven. Stop the Billa Bill. Thank you.
Tavela, yeye mimo ki Ramuala Leta from Great Alatawa Municipality under Ward Seven, ki memberaya ANC in good stengi. Ki loru ya input nyaneyen yane. Ntweki opela omu ki opela, pelayeleka rikirela de grade RR more di public school ya rena. Cause Ntweela ki wana grade RR ipa stipeta gurugara de private schools, gara de public schools ayon. Ki Ntweki opela ayon, kialéwa, ibele ki supporta de Billa Bill.
Yeah. Ki kialéwa, chairperson ya portfolio amoli komitri alena. Yeye mimo ki engaswa ma vidilana Great Alatawa Municipality, the youngest councillor in the council of Great Alatawa. Ki mimo ki tumeka ore, I support the bill. Chelochi chelorobengari ya Baba Sejibadi ya bill, Baba Sejiba fidiri. Igasi wefe obusela jancho gaiti ya anchi le anchi. Mara yenga ya bao gaiti ya oro. Onole kilongaike. Barre ki ki QP. Ukuma nerikerengwa ana agasizene grade gaiti ya bedi. Kabakala or giyo mo for this grade wa progress to the next grade. Ari jale sheedi ka mother because you go to grade eight, learners can't read sipedi. You go to grade nine, learners cannot read sipedi. And there are some in grade ten, ba iloru wa banalo akoba la sipedi. When we push them until grade twelve, how are they going to pass grade twelve? Mola iloru, Baba Kadozama ya kabakala or abatsoanlozena grade gaiti. Eh, mingwa yeme iduwe mra. Ene, ebake arba kanamelela. Aba fitamola u grade twelve. Iloru nguana ufe de grade ten or grade eleven. Uudimela o supplementa in grade twelve not to come back in class. It disadvantage ya guluguru va. Van. So we kere, arei, arei lebelele ya wuzi gnana ore. Kenki ya bao unklu, vilika kelamura satawa kia bao wa ke do. Eh, ki lewa ka mother. Lastly, I support the Billa Bill.
Chairperson, there was the first speaker, the previous speaker wanted to say kindly give RR in public school. That's all what she wanted to say. And the second speaker said, if we cannot teach our children to read their own mother tongue, it's gonna be a problem. Problem in the sense that how do you allow your child to pass any standard, especially grade from grade eleven to grade twelve? Any... Okay.
Kialéwa, yeye mimo ki filmo likomola da du lo ku du espukuwe, chairperson of CB, espukuwe primary school. Garata tuma gawre, eh, I support the Billa Bill. But another problem ya section, I mean clause fourteen, section eighteen A. Yeye wancha ore, clause fourteen, section eighteen A. Yeye wancha ore, if we are a ward committee, ocha go dislo use financial interest. And also, ingaba le pale spausaw, snale, the financial interest. Esangolo zena, le pale familiar otsanozanaga ra SGB. So ra o Billa, leli lukise nroyo. Sesengwa biabe, ki nyakoleja oso na. The mother of profession is education. Kialéwa.
Third round or we are done? One, two? This is the last round. If you did not speak now, three, at the back, number three, four, you can go to the line, mother. At the back, there is a end. Yes ma. Five. Let's just allow her to speak, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of parliament. My name is Anita Brudre. I am a proud parent of large school Zineen, Zineen Primary. I'm also a member of the governing body and also a resident of Zineen. The Constitution of South Africa, the highest law, as well as the Children's Act states that any decision taken where children are involved, the best interest of children should have paramount importance. Who is best placed to decide what is in the best interest of children? It is the parents. They know their individual children, they know their needs, they know what should be provided for them. What is a governing body? A governing body consists of teachers who knows those very same children. It consists of parents. Those parents and teachers are elected. By who? The parents, who knows their children. What government is trying to do is to eradicate the powers invested in governing bodies who acts in the best interest of the children in those schools. Any decision that a governing body takes, be it infrastructure, be it financial, is with one aim at heart, and that is the best interest of children. Do we trust governance enough to remove governing bodies' powers and leave it in the hands of government and have our children become faceless members of society? No. Governing bodies must keep their powers. Second issue, sale of alcohol. We have seen in the COVID epidemic what happens when the sale of alcohol are prohibited. Crime goes down. What is government now wanting to do? Having to sell liquor on a premises where minor children will definitely be. I'm thinking for instance, a sport activity. That can surely not be in the interest of those children who will be exposed to people having consumed alcohol. We support the enrollment of grade R as compulsory. We support... We support a standard, a general standard for the election of governing bodies, so that it be properly regulated and that the face of the governing body represents that school's community and that school's parents. I thank you for the opportunity and beg that the powers of the governing body remains. We want to work in collaboration with government, but we cannot do so if government is silencing our parents, who are represented by a proper constituted governing body. Thank you.
Uh, kialewa. Kera drao jaswa gase, kialewe, va etrapilevar, nagamo, kabaka behovonamo, ojoa parliamenting, ocheva lafas. Eh, ye kuli ye kinyakoe yvoncha omu. Erme kiboncha ore, gertheha Bella Bill. I support it strongly. So ye kinyakaya yvoncha o kia ore. Eh, gimolau election of the SGB. Nagwe, gokho bella ore, eh, malo gwa SGB, aketilwe for that term. Mojari ya ketilwe, ngwana agaya pasa adua ayatisha re institution ova ya onwe. Kwe gokho bella ore, abatuwala ba ketilweo. Mojariola asegaya nchiwa, gawre ngwana asarona skolo. Orebakunularu, ubele stability, gara etrapaya governance. Kiwe kinyak, kiwe kinyak, onoe yvoncha kialewo.
Good afternoon. He did not mention who he was. He stood up to support the Bella Bill, but he wanted to say if the SGB members are being chosen at the school and one of those members have a child who's going to quit the school at the end of the year, the request is that parent should be made to stay and so that there should be a, a very smooth running of the school. There should be stability in the school. Again, he says, um, in the, the, in what he has said is that the SGB chosen at the end of the year, the parent that have been chosen, when the child has gone out, that parent should remain for the sake of stability in the school.
Eh, tawela. Reni gulimeri se weta pili. Le evatuka moga wakoba gano gama, lagi ehli awamudze. Billi kia isapocha. Efela, onon tshewe, nyana, ye kinyakawo abanyana, gayona. Egana wa esiga mo asasa na gungara melawan, eh, 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 tuju. Teacher people ratio. Eh, nao ya lagana ikleagano onu buddhisajara. Ngeloru moli golun. Rudrisi gau tshi, ufai sabana ba twenty-five. Wo okta ba, wo gawone, yana, onda olega, o, alafabule, deviobia, wa, na ba, ba qualifai le, urudrisi. Wa putanga ome shumo. Le drava ya ne ya o meza, meza regolo. Charolo ya ne, ekutoba, eketcharo lenyala gabai, nagare, gebotchara nyala, etrapa meza regolo. Abbe, eluri drava ya teacher people ratio, ya one is to twenty-five ya jiwa. Ebeye, abbe drava ya ore, osgava ulimalewa kigolo, ke, ke waona, kina lima teachera agada se six. Gori minimum, ya educators at every school, be six. Teacher people ratio to stand at one is to twenty-five. Kialewo.
Kialerimedi sagamoga. Kialewa, yemimoki festina Makrubeti. Eh, kina konvina, ya ANC Women's League in Makshepeza region. So, I am Makrubeti Festina Nurse. Support the Bella Bill, which speaks to enhance the organizational efficiency of the basic education system to improve school governance, leadership, and accountability, transforming, transforming education services, and protecting vulnerable groups to ensure learners' well-being and access to learning. The legacy of colonialism and apartheid has entrenched spatial inequalities and poverty, which creates systematic exclusion, which requires parliament to amend legislation to respond to the changing condition continuously. The ANC fifty-fifth National Conference recognized that having achieved amendable targets pertaining to access, redress, and equity, the ANC must further ensure that there is strategic alignment and repositioning of the basic education sector by prioritizing policies and strategies targeting the achievement of equality teaching and learning outcomes, enhancing accountability systems to ensure the achievement of quality outcome and efficiency in the basic education sector. We support all the clauses in the Bella Bill, because it was, it will address problems amongst others on the one. Detolerating learner school performance dropping out through clause four, which increase accountability by school management, management team, and misconduct in school through clause nine by clarifying what constitutes an act of serious misconduct by learners. Two, uncertainty about home education legislation through clause thirty-seven ensures homeschooling learners' registration. Three, improving SGB members' accountability through declarations through clause fourteen and enabling the head of department to investigate school financial records and limiting SGB powers where capacity is inadequate is an intervening provision to support schools through clause seventeen.
Your time is up.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kialewa. Kera drao gulimedi savatuka moga. All protocol observed. So, yemimoki Tapelo Frank Mosipi, eh, what committee member from what eighteen. Eh, renai kemi moki kisapocha Bella Bill. So however, kinali, jepedi jetharu, jeloru ngaribulela. Nteloru jelungwe jadi ntaba, dibuleji jelungwe jeloru dibuleji, ditachi jomojon. So, kithwari portfolio ya education, sports, arts, and culture. So, anne ki, ki, kiariki bitiki berekanalijona. Kileka nuta, eh, some of the challenges jeloru tlakanalijona. So, kilemwele ore, renale, levanababa nji. Baloruke vanaba, batuwojwalinama babi, baloraba nali pro, the proper document, mo South Africa. So, agitiburunaita wali, part of the Bella Bill sections, but it's a challenge jeloru kileka yemo. So, my pushua kakona eh, le fapalacha tuju, didira enka yona, kasonase. Eh, renale vanabalo already barba, ba, ba, moli golun. And others, batile, because kiboni baba ngoba itweli, baba ngwesa le baba nyan. So, kwekeru mone le fapale kadira sesengokalo ka, ka, ka yona you. Sesengwa bebe ko sapocha di, 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 di preschools as a foundation. So, oru bana bayo zana klase grade R, at least ibaba bakona, unwala mabitu abon. Kialewo.
Tawela. Gulimedi savatuka moga kamae mohaba ona. Kalimedi salukomi niti kawodano. Nagin nama bulaa Estamalaji, giwa Bulubeli South, mo baragumo bi village. Renale ngwana mbona litwenduani es, gana gwaro gwa ora ona. Ngwana netwenduani es, gwa mo South Africa, bu ma ova gwa mowe, gwa baba gwa mowe. Ana basa, ebake riva mulisa basa, ba humu afes, bari, ni document ya oli tagatagani. Kia baloru upasi, upasi ya metriki, kia twenty-twenty. Udujigaye, ah, sebepe lomrao, ibile unanawana. Ngwana olawawe, ah, nali Steve Keats, unale teres, abazurubana. Kibemku.
I did not hear the first name properly, but what I captured is that she's a Miss Malaji. And she's got a problem. They have a child who is from, I think, US, who doesn't have proper documents to be in the school. She attended school and she has passed metric, but she cannot get proper documents. She now has a child, and that child also will never have documents. So she's requesting the government to help in, in facilitating that this child should, eh, should get proper documents.
Chair, okay. Ke yera ma tumatio. Ke bereka lidi golo. Kinyakawa emamo ore, kisapocha biliye hundred percent. Ibele kisamaraya zari wule, richele sapochileu, biliye hundred percent. Ketsapa ore gamrao we, ye kibuleji. Ah, osadlo balili wuleji. Yeah. Inova taba, ke, taba ekuli ye kimeju. The only thing, dear, sandori, di re. Kia ore, how this bill is being implemented? For example, renale regulation jari SGB, where in situation you have certain people who rent learners. Those are areas that we need to guard against. But hundred percent supporting the bill. Thank you.
My name is Ramal Johnat Feo. He's, I am supporting the bill hundred percent. I don't think after I've spoken, there should be other people coming to speak here. Now, what I would like to do is we should, as a community, take part. That is what she said about obtaining hundred percent, saying supporting the bill hundred percent.
No, thank you very much. I think we are done for today. Is there any other hand? Nothing. So we are coming to an end. We are coming to an end of the the public hearing session. Just to remind everybody that there are forms here. If you, if you did not speak, you were not sure, and you did not even write, just write a submission. But please mention whether you support or you don't support eh, the bill. We are done eh, in Linyenyi today. We are gonna move eh, to our next destination. We want to inform you that I have mentioned, as I have mentioned before, that we are starting in Limpo Po. So there are still about eight provinces that we still need to go to and do the same work. After that, we are going to have this report tabled in parliament, which we are going therefore to vote for or against. And on that note, I want to ask Onarapoliwela to, Suwela to do eh, a vote of thanks.
Once again, good afternoon. Thank you, Chairperson, for, for this opportunity to pass a vote of thanks. And let me first thank you for steering the ship. I believe you have given everyone an equal opportunity to speak. And to honorable members, thank you for availing yourself for this important process. And to everyone who participated, be rest assured that your contributions has been recorded and it will be processed according to the applicable laws of parliament and processes that need to ensue. Your presence is highly appreciated. Without you here, this meeting would not hold. And thank you very much for coming till we meet again. Thank you, Chair. Well, as we leave, there is some refreshment outside. Just get a pack. Thank you very much. Oh, they said be seated. They will distribute. Thank you. And as a disclaimer, we have got the only principal in our midst and is coming from here. Eh, Remuraseeta. Thank you very much.